Lord, it's a new year, it's a new council session. As always, we thank you for your blessing on this city. We thank you for the gift of life. We thank you for the gift of truth. We thank you for the opportunity to be here and start a new session together. We pray that each one of us, that you would give us the wisdom to know what is good, what is right, what is true, that we'd make wise decisions for the city, that we could work productively with one another. We pray all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Good evening. Happy New Year. And welcome to the January 6, 2020, study session of Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 188th regular meeting, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Wednesday, January 15, 2020. We'd like to note that Councilwoman White is absent this evening. And I would like to take a minute to introduce our wonderful department heads who are here this evening. Beginning on my left, Todd Zalinsik, our city engineer; Mark Taramina, our planning and economic development director; to my right, our clerk, Susan Nash; our city attorney, Mr. Paul Burnier; and in the audience, we have our treasurer, Linda Scheel; we have our department head, Director of Human Resources, Denise Mayer; our Parks and Rec Director, Ted Davis; our Director of Administrative Services, Dave Varga; and we'd like to welcome our new mayor, Maureen Miller-Brosnan. Thank you for joining us this evening, Mayor, and welcome. Are there any announcements that council would like to make this evening?
Madam President, it's with deep regret and condolences to our Chief Cade and his wife Lori, on the passing of Lori's mother, Monica Nee Hazel. And that was on December 28. Chief and Mrs. Cade are very appreciative of our Livonia Fire Department paramedics and the staff at St. Mary's Hospital. Mrs. Nee Hazel was the mother of four, including our slain heroic policeman Larry Nee Hazel. She was a woman of faith, service to others, and her life will be celebrated at a funeral service at Saint Eden's Catholic Church. Saint Aiden, yeah. What did I say? Edus? Wrong church. It's Aiden's. Catholic Church at 11:30 on Friday, January 17. Please keep the Nee Hazel family in your prayers. And I would also like to announce, I started off with a great New Year. Two of my good friends from Bentley High School passed on. Our homecoming queen, Sherry Lidle, her family resides and lives here in Livonia; and also Sarah Geiger, her father, many years ago, was one of the only baby doctors in Livonia, Max Stewart. And both women expired within two days of each other. So our condolences to their families, and keep those families as well in your prayers. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman White. Anyone else?
Madam President, if I may. So on January 18 at 11:00 a.m., it will be the Sixth Annual PTA Dad's Chili Cook-Off. That'll be at Franklin High School. There will be a basket raffle, face painting prizes, a bake sale, and a 50/50. And more importantly, for our context here, Brandon McCullough will be representing Buchanan Elementary School, and I will be representing Hoover Elementary School. So if any of our colleagues want to come and pay $5 to eat the chili that we make, I don't know if that would recommend it. But maybe some other people are making some chili that might be edible. But anyways, come out and please support your elementary schools here in Livonia and all the other elementary schools. The winner of the Chili Cook-Off will receive a $500 grant for their child's school. So come join us. And the grant is provided by the Quanis Club here in Livonia. So thanks a lot, and you're going down. So, thank you.
And again, Mr. Jolly, what was the date?
That's January 18 at Franklin High School, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Donovan.
I just wanted to say thank you. I think my father's watching at home right now. So I just want to say thank you. It's my first council meeting, study session. It's quite an honor, and I'm looking forward to serving with all of you here on council. So thank you.
Great, welcome.
One quick thing. I have my wife and my daughter decided to make it, again, our first council meeting, and wanted to say hello. Thanks for staying up late and attending this study session.
Very nice, and welcome, Councilman McCullough. How nice that you're joined by your lovely family tonight. All right, with that, we will move ahead into our agenda. This is a study meeting. There are no votes taken. The council members will, however, offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. Resolutions offered may include an approving, denying, or referring resolution to a committee or city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that are simply received and filed for the information of the city council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular meeting of Wednesday, January 15, where they will be voted on officially. If you'd like to participate in any of the agenda items that are taken up this evening, please approach one of the podiums at either side of the room when the item is called, and you will be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner, whether that is a private citizen, whether that is the city or a private entity, will make the initial presentation, followed by remarks from those in the audience wishing to speak. So please come to the podium when the item is called. When you reach the podium, please state your name for the record, so that your remarks may be properly attributed to you in the minutes for this meeting. This will also let the television audience know, and the council members know, who is speaking to them. And with that, we will move on to our first item of new business, item number one. This is a request to amend Council Resolution 306-19 from Paul Bond of Fason Bond LLP. To specify the beginning date...
Council President?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Been a few years. Before we move to the agenda, we will go to audience communication.
Madam Chair, Maureen Miller-Brosnan, Mayor of the City of Livonia, wanted to use just this opportunity this afternoon, or this evening, rather, to welcome you all and congratulate you all in your role now in moving into the year 2020 as true leaders in our community. So to those of you who are new to sitting in those chairs, I am sure that minute by minute, as you're sitting there, you're feeling the honor that truly comes with being a leader and a representative in this community. To those who have the honor of coming back and returning again, I'm sure that it is not any less thrilling to sit there and be able to do the work that you do. For me, standing on this side feels very, very different, and is thrilling as well. So I wanted just to take an opportunity, again, to welcome everybody to this year, to let you know that we are well into the first week of transition. I had an opportunity last week to actually sit in the office, find my way to the restroom on Thursday and Friday, and this week, we've begun to meet with each one of our department heads. I had a chance last week to meet with Council President McIntyre. She was the very first meeting that I wanted to hold, and that was with real intent. And the intent is, is that there's a very strong working relationship between the mayor and the council moving forward, as we take on many of the challenges that are before us. And I know you've heard me talk about what those challenges are, but just for the sake of setting a really strong agenda as we move into 2020, I know that together, we're committed to solving the police and fire shortage that we have of officers and firefighters in our force right now. And again, that is the number-one priority for this administration. And until we get our arms around that, not too much else is going to get as full of attention from the mayor's office right now. The second thing that we're really going to be working hard at is developing a workforce development effort in our city, to make sure that there are jobs for our young people, and that there's a direct pipeline to many of the fantastic jobs that are available here in the City of Livonia for those people who are graduating from high school that perhaps aren't bound for college right away. So we're looking forward to working with the chamber, our leading businesses, our educational organizations, our high schools and our colleges within the City of Livonia to make that happen. And then the third area of focus is going to be roads, and making sure that we get our fair share of road dollars. I had a chance, along with Todd Zalinsik, actually, before officially sitting in the seat, to attend the Wayne County Meeting on Road Funding, and to let folks know that we were going to play hard. We needed to make sure that we were at the top of the list, and that we were getting our fair share. So I think we definitely made an impression. I know Todd, over the years, has made an impression. Word is, they don't like him very much. I like him a lot. So those are our three main issues. Of course, there are all sorts of other things that we want to be able to get our arms around. And one of the ways that I think that we're going to be able to get our arms around many of these issues and move ahead further and faster is to really embrace innovation and technology as we move forward in advancing some of these ideas throughout the city. That, along with some really hard-proven, data-driven results, and overall good communication. And that's what I think that you have come to expect, not only from the mayor's office, but from all the department heads in the city, is that just stellar communication. So you won't see me at many of your meetings. And Council President McIntyre and I talked about this. You are extremely well-represented with department heads, and they have amazing information to share with you. But should you need me to attend a meeting, please let me know in advance. I'd be happy to be here. But I respect the positions that you're in. I've sat in those seats before. This is your meeting. You know everything that there is to know about leading the city and moving it forward, and moving the agenda forward for the City of Livonia. So I trust that together, we're going to be able to make that happen, and we're going to be able to make exciting things happen in the city. Along those lines, one of the first things that I need to draw your attention to is our census. And I'm hoping that we get a chance to really work together, in all of us serving as ambassadors, as we engage in getting people to respond to the census. You know, the census is vitally important for a city like ours, in making sure that everybody is counted. So again, we get our fair share of federal, state, and local district money that's available. There's $675 billion in federal funding that's out there to be captured. And if we don't get ourselves counted correctly, we don't capture our fair share. So when we last had our census, which was 10 years ago, Livonia had the highly coveted position of being the number-one responder. We had the best response rate nationwide. We intend to do that again, but that will take a full court press on behalf of all of us. So as you approach your civic associations, as you get chances to talk with your schools, and you're out there publicly talking to residents in our community, if you'd remember to put the census in as a plug line. What we're doing is we're coming up on some deadlines. In March, March 12, for example, between the 12th and the 20th, every household is going to receive an invitation to respond to the census, either online or by phone. The big census day, through the course of that, there'll be reminders and things like that. But the big day that we're shooting for is April 1. That's Census Day. And that's when we're hoping that all of the responses are really in by. Census takers will begin to visit homes, especially where seniors are residing, trying to make sure that students on campus and senior citizens are all counted in the census. But between March and April is really where we're pushing for people to stay alert, mail their information in, or respond online, or respond by phone. There will be follow-ups to all of that that'll go pretty much through May 1. But at that point, we're really hoping that everybody is counted. So I ask for your help in this effort. I know all of you have amazing contacts in the community. If you would employ and implore them to make sure that they raise their hand, get counted, it's going to go a long way to making sure that, once again, Livonia is a number-one community. So I thank you in advance for your help. Have a good evening and a fantastic meeting. Any questions? Sure.
Vice President.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, regarding the census, are we...I appreciate you pushing that. Are we limited to just getting the message out? Or do we actually have access during that March-to-April timeframe to data, to actually go after people that have...I'm guessing not, but I just wanted to ask.
Yeah. No, it really...our role is, as a messenger, a marketing force, getting the word out. Now, we do work and try to collaborate and pull together groups that can help us to do that. Dave Varga is going to be our lead in this effort. He was our lead the last time. Nobody knows this better than he does. So we'll be talking to special groups within the community, really trying hard to push out groups that might not be as willing to respond. You know, I think there's no doubt about it. Things have changed since we last went out and took the census 10 years ago. People are a little bit more skittish about responding to online requests for information, to phone requests for information. You know, we have a lot more that people need to be aware of. So, you know, some of the things that we're trying to make people aware of is that, first of all, anybody that's collecting census data is not going to ask for your social security number. That's really important. So, you know, we're trying to avoid any type of fraud, and people getting entrapped by any type of fraud. People will not be taking census data asking for credit card numbers or credit card information. And people taking census data and collecting data will not be asking for your political party affiliation. Those are three areas where we see where, you know, people may come in posing as one thing, and, you know, really operating in a different capacity. So we want to make sure that our residents are aware that really all we're trying to do is make sure how many people are living in your home, whether or not you own or rent your home, and information about people living in your home, their gender, their age, their relationship to you, their race and ethnic origin. Okay? All right. If you have any questions, I'm available, but the expert on this is going to be Dave Varga, okay? Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome, and thank you for that excellent update.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Steve Monroe, and I live on Ann Arbor Trail. And I wish to bring to the council's attention that the property formerly known as Camelot Nursing Home is now shifting over to Detroit...
Rescue Mission.
Yeah, Rescue Mission. We're a little concerned because of the proximity to the homes and the school. We're against it.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Mike Kelly. I live in Westland, but my son, he lives on Northfield, in the subdivision right behind Livonia Churchill High School. He couldn't come tonight, him and his wife. And I have the same concerns as this gentleman. You know, I have two grandchildren, one's about her size, and an old grandson. And I don't want them playing in the neighborhood where there might be some transients roaming around. And they don't have bus services, according to my daughter-in-law, that the kids have to walk to school. And that school's right up on Ann Arbor Trail. And, you know, it's just not a good fit. And one of the reasons he bought that house four years ago was Livonia is a well-run city, but more importantly, it's a safe city. So it's not a good fit. If he was here, he'd be telling you, "We don't need that."
All right. Well, thank you very much, and thank you for representing your son.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I can just provide some comments here?
Please.
We are aware of the issue that you bring up. At this point, it's my understanding that the administration and the Law Department have been referred this. Currently, there is nothing before the city council or the city in terms of an approval or any kind of request pending. So right now, this is a change in ownership, and that's as much as we know at this point as well. Okay? So it's on the radar. We will keep apprised of what's going on, just as you are, and we'll go from there. Okay? Thank you both for coming out.
All right. Anyone else? Let's call for audience communication. Now, we will go into our new business agenda, beginning with item number one. It is a request to amend Council Resolution 306-19 from Paul F. Bond from Fason and Bond LLP to specify the beginning date of the approved commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate to be December 31, 2020, for Schoolcraft Lodge Incorporated for the rehabilitation of the obsolete property located at 31501 Schoolcraft Road. Good evening.
Good evening, Council. Brandon Grisco with the law firm Fason Bond, here on behalf of Paul Bond, who sends his regrets he couldn't make it tonight. Council, essentially, this is, as you said, Madam President, this is a request to amend the resolution just to reflect a beginning date. The State Tax Commission now has a policy in place where, in certain situations, they will backdate certificates, and we're trying to avoid that, which was our intent all along. And I believe the city administration is on the same page with that.
And the issue was that the initial resolution did not have...correct? Did not have the date?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. So this is really, as you said, a correction, a correction to the resolution to bring it in line with the requirements.
Yes, Madam President.
Okay. Counsel?
So moved.
All right. So you'd like to offer an approving resolution for the regular meeting? All right. Any discussion? Would you like that on consent?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Grisco. We're all set. As you know, because it's on the consent, you do not need to come back and pay us a call on the 15th, but you're always welcome to, so.
Thank you very much. I may take you up on that.
Give our best to Mr. Bond.
Of course.
Number two is...item two is a tax rate request for the Wayne County Zoological Authority for the year 2019. This is from the Office of the City Clerk to set the rate of tax to be levied and requesting that it be collected as a winter tax.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a bit of...excuse me, a bit of housekeeping. This gives council the ability to give the treasurer approval to put it on the tax bill, and so that we can send the next three, two, three, and four are all tax rates.
Okay.
Madam President, as has been said, this is a housekeeping matter. We deal with it every year. I'll offer this for...I'll offer an approving resolution for consent if there's no objection from council.
All right. No objections? And these do need a vote, correct? These are not receive and file? Right? Yeah.
Yes, they need a vote.
Okay. Number three is tax rate request for the Wayne County Art Institute Authority for the year 2019, Office of the City Clerk, to set the rate of tax to be levied and requesting that it be collected as a winter tax.
Madam President?
Yes.
Same as the previous item. It's a housekeeping issue. I'll offer this for approving for consent if there's no objection.
Okay. All right. Very good. Moving on. Item number five, request to approve location and schedule...
Four.
Oh, thank you. Tax rate request for the Huron Clinton Metropolitan Authority for the year 2019. This is from the Office of the City Clerk to set the tax rate to be levied and requesting that it be collected as a winter tax.
Madam President?
Yes.
As a big fan of Kensington, I'm happy to offer this for the consent agenda as an approval.
All right. Very good. Seeing no objections, now we'll move on to item number five. This is a request to approve the location and schedule of dates and times for the 2020 Board of Review meetings, as well as compensation rates for members. This comes to us from the Department of Assessment, per the requirements of the State of Michigan statute, MCL 211.3.0. Good evening, Ms. Goslin.
Good evening, Council. Linda Goslin is assessing. The item before you is a request to approve the dates and times of the March Board of Review, as well as the compensation. The board will meet seven days this year to hear valuation issues, as well as hardship circumstances. Of those seven meetings, there will be one meeting that will be held one day for evening meetings only. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
Counsel?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Jolly.
Happy to offer an approving resolution for this on consent if there are no objections.
All right. No objections, so we'll put that on consent. So we're all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Before we move on, Ms...good evening.
Thank you. Christopher Martin, 11037 Hubbard, Livonia, 40150. And just want to let the citizens know on this particular item here, that these are open meetings. Anyone can attend, just like this is an open meeting. A number of years ago, and those of you who might be in the TV land watching this, know that I ran for city council on a number of occasions. And one of the things that I tried to do was to learn as much as I possibly could. So in my attempt to attend these particular meetings, I initially was barred from doing that. And then I could sit in the meeting, hear the petitioner, but then they wanted me to leave when they made a decision. Also, and that was later changed, by the way, also, as I sat there, it took me a while to get a chair, because I was told I could stand in the corner. So anyway, I eventually got a chair, sat down. Every petitioner that came in was asked, "Do you mind if Mr. Martin sits here and watches this?" Not one person said no. But keep in mind, it's an open meeting. No one's barred from an open meeting, or shouldn't be. Other cities have these, not in a small room, but in their regular, you know, council meeting area, where anyone can sit. Anyone can watch. Now granted, there might be some people that, you know, have a hardship. If they did, you know, I would have got up and left. But there was not one person in the five or six days that I sat there and watched this that said no to me being there. Not one. It's an open meeting. The only ones that objected were people in the assessor's office. So let you know what took place. Anyone can go to those meetings.
Thank you for that clarification, sir. All right. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Just to speak to this? All right. We're all set. Thank you. We will now move on to item number six. This is a proposed temporary classifications wage increase as a result of an increase in the state of Michigan, minimum wage rate. This comes to us from the Civil Service Department, effective January 1, 2020, for classifications of college co-op, high school co-op, library page, seasonal clerk, and student page. Good evening, Ms. Mayor.
Good evening, Madam President. Counsel? Happy New Year, everyone. The item before you is indeed, in relation to the recent increase in the Michigan minimum hourly wage rate, it went from $9.45 per hour to $9.65 per hour. Therefore, it required an increase for any of our hourly employees that were at the $9.45 rate. It also caused us to review all of the other hourly rates, so that we could keep the differentials the same. And before you, you have a three-year schedule that we would like you to consider, keeping in mind that if the Michigan minimum wage rate does not go up, and that would mean that unemployment was less than 8.5% or greater than 8.5%, then we would come back to seek approval for the increases for City of Livonia employees.
All right.
Madam President?
Questions?
So moved.
All right. On the consent agenda?
Consent, yes.
All right. Anyone from the audience wishing to comment on this? Seeing none, it'll be on the consent agenda. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Item number seven, is a request to waive the city's competitive bid process and to award a bid received through the Tri-County Public Purchasing Cooperative. This comes to us from the Public Service Division for gasoline and diesel fuel for the period February 1, 2020, through January 31, 2022. Good evening, Mr. Rohuff, and congratulations on your status as a new grandfather.
Appreciate that. Thank you. It's been a wonderful month almost so far. I appreciate that. Happy New Year, everyone, and congratulations to everyone. Looking forward to working with you all. As you mentioned, this is for our fuel for the City of Livonia. The cooperative is hosted by Sterling Heights, which includes 20 communities. We've been part of this cooperative for many years, and it's been a great benefit and really good deal for the city. The bids were advertised on mitten for the years, as you mentioned, 2020 through 2022, with an option to extend for an additional two years upon mutual agreement. Fuel is paid for based on the price per gallon wholesale rack average, as published by the Oil Priced Information System, or OPUS, the Detroit Rack Average, plus a markup for delivery per gallon. Prices change daily on this, just like they do at the local gas stations. There are two forms of delivery that we use for this program, first being a truck transport, which are for orders over 5,000 gallons, and secondly, for delivery tank wagon for orders that are under 5,000 gallons. The recommendation being made by the cooperative is to split the award of the bid among three bidders. For the truck transport portion of the bid, the recommendation is to award the bid to RKA Petroleum, Inc., and Ports Petroleum Company, Inc., the two low bidders meeting the bid specifications. For the tank wagon portion of the bid, the recommendation is being made to award RKA Petroleum and Atlas Oil Company, also the two low bidders meeting the specs. Awarding the two low bidders will allow the participating members the ability to leverage favorable pricing based upon the type of quantity in fuel being purchased. The department has received... fuel being purchased. The department has received fuel from all of the listed suppliers historically, and we've had no issues with any of them. All companies perform well in the, all the way up to the contract specification. It is the recommendation of the division that council proceed as follows. Award the contract for truck transport over 5,000 gallons to RKA Petroleum to supply the city with gasoline and diesel fuel under the fuel, under the terms and conditions of the bid for the period of February 1st, 2020 through January 31st of 2022, with the option to extend the terms and conditions an additional two years upon mutual consent. Number two, and I'm not sure if you want me to read the verbiage for every one of these all the way through, but they're consistent all the way through.
I don't think, unless, I know we have a question from one council person, but I think everyone's reviewed it, so we won't put you through that exercise.
Appreciate that. So with that, we'd like to waive the formal bidding process in accordance with section 3.04.140.D.4 of the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended, since no advantage to the city would result from separate competitive bidding processes. No special appropriation is needed since funds have been budgeted in the public service gas and oil account as well as the police and fire gas and oil accounts. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Rohr. Vice President Burr?
Yeah, Mr. Rohr, first of all, yeah, this is well laid out and easy to understand, so thank you for preparing that for us. I do have one question. When we're offering, when we're offering the bid to two low bidders, and the sentence in the packet that was given to us was, "Awarding to the two low bidders will allow participating members the ability to leverage favorable pricing based on the type and quantity of fuel being purchased." Just educate me, if you have two people that won the bid, and yet it sounds like we're still going to be offering, leveraging them against one another, is the way I read this? I'm probably misreading it, but can you help me understand what that means?
Yeah, what they're saying is if there is a community out there that want, and then again, if you went through and you look at the bid tabs, there's different numbers for every portion of over 5,000, under 5,000, and depending on how they want to package that together, they may find it more advantageous to, you know, maybe pair up Atlas with RKA or something like that when they're, when they're doing their deliveries. So the reason that they do that is also if there is a strain on the delivery for one of the companies that they have the other one that's available as well.
Does one have first right of refusal over the other, or?
It's totally by community who you choose to, to have the supplier bring you the fuel.
So hypothetically, so we have two, two providers here, RKA and Petroleum Traders Corporation, that are both winning the bid for truck transport unmetered over 5,000 gallons, so it's the same thing. Hypothetically speaking, is, could you give all the business to one and none to the other, or is there something that governs a certain amount that each gets? It just seems odd to me that two would win the bid.
Right. I can tell you from our end of it, we're just going with whatever the lowest number is per provider.
Okay.
There may be other communities, maybe it's a delivery, a time issue of how quickly some of them can get there, or past relationships that maybe they have used in there. I know for us, we're bottom line, low bidder for each one, that's who we use, and that's.
So they've basically won the right to be considered?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm not anticipating a lot of people paying more just because, but it's there.
Yeah, I just, I was just curious how that worked. It struck me as odd. And then, this is purely out of curiosity, what is the wholesale price roughly for gasoline relative to the retail price that we all pay?
That varies drastically on a daily basis.
Is it a buck fifty? Is it a buck? Is it two bucks?
Yeah, it's about a buck fifty right now.
I was just curious. Thanks. I don't have any objections. If there's no objections from council, I'd offer approval for consent.
Any objections? And just one thing I want to clarify, since we have a new council, and sometimes when people hear that we're waiving a competitive bidding process, the mitten process and Sterling Heights running this cooperative isn't itself a competitive bidding process, and it involves 20 communities. So what we did is we joined in as one of those 20 communities, which ensures that we get the absolute best price possible based on a much higher volume than if we had bid it ourselves. Did I summarize that correctly, Mr. Rohr?
The cooperative is about 300, or I'm sorry, 3 million gallons, and we'll be, we'll be in the range of like 340.
Yeah, so.
So for us to put that out on the street, we would be paying a higher number for sure.
So it was a competitive bidding process, just not our Livonia specified process.
It was on mitten and.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that everyone listening at home understands that it was a competitive bidding process. Thank you.
Chair?
Yes, Councilman Donovan.
Just clarification, there's not necessarily a difference between the quality of the fuel, right, between the two?
No, absolutely not.
All right, we're all set. It's on consent. Thank you, Mr. Rohroff, and again, congratulations, and please congratulate your wife as well. Very happy for you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, item number eight is a request to change the authorized representative to the Dwarf Project number 7452-01, and that's DWRF, which stands for the Drinking Water Revolving Fund. Did I get that correct, Mr. Zalinsik?
Nice Japanese acronym, yep.
Learned that acronym last year. This comes to us from the Public Service Division in order to allow for the seamless reporting requirement for the improvements to the existing water treatment and distribution system.
Good evening, Madam President. I'll go ahead and take this item along with number 10, but just wanted to, again, congratulations on the new council members. Look forward to working with everyone. And just a little history on the Dwarf Projects. Previously back in 2015, we were awarded a $3.1 million project that we did Coventry Gardens, which is one of our older subdivisions. The second one we did was just under $7 million for a portion of old Rosedale Gardens and areas east of Middlebelt, south of West Chicago. And now our third one's going to be $10.25 million, which is going to encompass sections 35, 36, and a portion at Six Mile and Middlebelt. Again, so we're very pleased to get a low-interest loan from the state for the funding. This allows us, again, to get reimbursement. I've done the previous two Dwarf Projects administration-wise, working closely with the Finance Department to make sure that we get the reimbursements and get our money back from the state, and then obviously make sure we pass the auditors that everything's in order. So previous representative was Jacob Rushlow, who handled getting this thing off and running for, for us to then review for design. We're looking to go out again for bids this year, and just asking for the city council's approval to change it from Jacob Rushlow Superintendent to my designation, so that way we can get all the email and all the information directly to me, so I can work directly with the representative from Eagle to get our Dwarf funding. If you have any further questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Counsel, questions, direction?
So Mr. Zalinsik is nominating himself.
Yes.
Nice move. Approving, please.
All right.
On consent.
Move approval on consent.
Yes.
All right. I would tell you, you don't have to come back on the fifteenth. He would miss you. He'd be lonely over there. Number nine is a request to authorize appropriation expenditure. This also comes to us from the Public Service Division to enable payment to Belfour USA for materials, equipment, and labor necessary to perform the emergency cleanup of the ceiling collapse at Fox Creek from budgeted funds. Mr. Rohroff?
Thank you. As you're probably aware, we had an emergency repair at the Fox Creek Golf Course Restaurant. The ceiling collapsed overnight, causing a very unsafe situation that resulted in closing of the restaurant until all the materials could be safely removed. Belfour USA was called to perform the emergency removal and the cleanup work. The removal was pretty intense. They had to remove the entire acoustical ceiling system, which were the tiles, the electrical fixtures, the cable runs, insulation, and all of the ceiling grid that was there. So in accordance with section 3.04.140.D.1 of the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended, we hereby notifying you of this emergency, and we are requesting that city council authorize the payment of $25,806.60 to Belfour USA for the materials, equipment, and labor necessary to perform the emergency cleanup of the ceiling collapse at Fox Creek.
Yes, Councilman McCullough.
Kind of like off the subject of the actual restoration, do you guys have a timeline or any ETA on, you know, replacement of any kind of grid system or drop ceiling?
I would love to answer that question, but Mr. Davis in Parks and Rec is here, and he's more on that end of it, so if you don't mind, I will hand off to him.
I knew I'd bring Mr. Davis on.
Good evening, Mr. Davis.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President. Councilman McCullough, thank you for that question. I was sitting back there hoping I'd get a chance to come to the podium. Excuse me. We're anticipating right now, bids are, we're actually writing the specifications right now to put this out to bid. We're hoping that the project is completed in the month of March prior to our golf season. So right now, again, working with finance and purchasing and with facility maintenance to create the bid specifications, get that out on mitten, and then we'll know more, and we'll know more of a cost, and we'll come back in front of council requesting the expenditure, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Can I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. I know Councilman Jolly had a question.
Thank you, Madam President. This might be one or both of you that have to answer this. In terms of the loss here suffered by the city, is that covered to an extent by our insurance? Is it covered by the private businesses' insurance? And also, are we on the hook for any loss of business that, you know, Coach's Corner is suffering, or do they have business interruption insurance? I'm just kind of looking like, is this a bigger thing that will come before us later on, or is this something that will be, you know, relatively simple fix? Ultimately, are we paying? Are the residents paying? Who's paying?
Well, I think, I believe this is an insurance claim, but we are self-insured. So again, at the end of the day, we are going to pay for it, meaning the city. As far as the tavern or the business having business interruption insurance, they do have that, but their claims adjusters already contacted the city, and I'm sure there's going to be some sort of recourse there they're going to want. Because when this repair does occur, the business is more than likely, Coach's Corner is going to be closed for a week to 10 days while scaffolding's put in, you know, all new electrical is installed, and a new drop ceiling is installed. So there's going to be further interruption there. How much, again, we just don't know. Right now, we're guessing, estimating a week to 10 days additional.
Okay, so just, and this is a little bit off subject here, but along these lines, when we rent a city-owned facility to a private business or a private entity, to what extent do we require them to have private insurance? Do we require them to have private liability insurance, or is that us as a city versus the facility insurance?
Yeah, part of the contract is that they had to have business interruption insurance, and they had to have insurance for anything that happens on the premises. The facility itself is, as I understand it, is our responsibility on that. As far as the conversation you were having before about the business interruption, and Mr. Davis mentioned maybe the insurance carrier is going to come to us, that's a conversation we're having with Mr. Fisher, Mr. Davis, and myself. And quite frankly, we're getting up to speed on that. This just happened. That's a conversation we'll be having with the insurance companies that I don't feel real comfortable discussing now.
And I can appreciate that. I guess it's just, it's one of these things when we are renting out the inside of a facility and ultimately providing control of the facility to a private outside entity. There might be some reason to look into whether or not they should have an insurance responsibility for the internal structure, that we're not, you know, in control of on a day-to-day basis where they are.
I looked at the contract, and they do have responsibilities. When their negligence has created a problem with it, but when it's in a problem much like this, which is a longer-term problem before they had the lease, it's more of our responsibility on that. But that is all included into the lease agreements. It specifies when there's negligence or their acts create the problem, who's responsible. It's in all of our leases.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
As well as a requirement for different types of insurance.
Thank you.
Councilman Donovan.
Madam Chair, that was my question. Is there a reason to determine why, why the drop ceiling fell? Was there some sort of negligence there? And any reason why to that?
Councilman Donovan, actually, welcome to city council. Thank you for a tough question. That's a great question. We simply don't know the answer. I mean, that was not installed by the city, to our knowledge, or by Coach's Corner. So it was installed prior to 2006, and we simply don't have any records on it. Now, how it was suspended, I don't think we'd do that the same, we wouldn't do it the same way today. And obviously, we'd have it inspected, but that wasn't the case prior to '06. So, you know, we just don't have a great answer on that right now.
Just a follow-up to that question. With these facilities that we own, but we are renting to private entities, are we often inspecting these facilities, or is it, I mean?
Are we inspecting them? It's the question, are we inspecting them for purposes, so this doesn't happen?
Correct.
Or are we inspecting them much like the health department does?
No, are we, are we inspecting them for situations like this?
I don't know the answer to that. We would have to ask probably Mr. Hannah or Mr. Rohroff.
Mr. Rohroff, do you have any answer to that?
The answer to your question is, that is in the discussion phase right now of going through and trying to look at every building that has a drop ceiling. And as Mr. Davis had mentioned, prior to this, this was a drop ceiling. It was in there. It wasn't of any concern to anyone at that particular point in time. To answer your question directly, in the past, have we done that? There has not been, to my knowledge, any type of, and I think, as you all probably know, we've talked about different positions in the city and all of the buildings that we own, that that should become an important part of moving forward and doing an inspection on those buildings. But currently, at this point, that situation was not something that was inspected prior, but the discussions are in process now of putting together a plan to get through and at least do initial, on the surface inspections of a lot of the buildings that we have. Obviously, we have over 100 buildings in the city that are owned, and to get to those will take a little bit of time, but that's something that we are looking into to make sure that we start to move down that road.
I appreciate that, and I think that might be the silver lining of this incident, to see if we can avoid future incidents. Thank you all.
Madam President?
Yes?
If I may, to Mr. Rohroff. Mr. Rohroff, if, in past times, we've talked about project manager for all the buildings we have in the, or in the city. Do you feel that perhaps this would be part of that person's role as, if we were to move in those directions?
Yeah, I think, you know.
And is it needed?
I'm not sure I make that decision, but my opinion, since I have building maintenance that works under me, the situation itself, when you start talking about buildings and everything that's incorporated into buildings with HVAC systems, roofs, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
I think it's definitely something that would fall under that, under that title or that category for that particular position. I think what you're really talking about is an asset management plan that is actually incorporating all of the buildings.
Correct.
And the facilities that the city is in control of.
Right.
You know, that is obviously something much larger than, you know, myself or my building maintenance people can, can try to tackle. But I think the discussions of, you know, that facility manager or that project manager would definitely be right up there at the top of the list of getting an inventory and doing that kind of evaluation on all of the buildings.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? Do we have direction? Yes, Mr. McCullough.
Obviously, you know, it's a kind of a bad situation that the drop ceiling fell, but obviously it was during after hours. I think it gives us a chance to, you know, look at the future to see what kind of a new scope we could put in one of our city assets. So there's the silver lining there. As for the cost, I would like to put forth an approving resolution for consent.
All right. Any objections?
Nope.
All right, place on consent. Thank you, Mr. Rohroff.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. All right, moving on to item number 10. This is a request to prove final cost information and to authorize additional appropriation expenditure. This comes to us from the Engineering Division for the 2018 sidewalk program. It's contract 18-G. It was previously handled under Council Resolution 102-18. Mr. Zalinsik?
Madam President, city council members, again, this is just a final detailed list of the project costs. Obviously, it helps our auditors. I apologize. I was hoping to get this in December's council meeting, but it's before you. Basically, if you flip to the second page, it kind of gives an overall breakdown of the construction cost. We're tallied at $557,266.22. We add a 10% admin fee onto that. We do have some locations done by precision cutting, bringing the total project cost to $617,992.85 to help make sure sidewalks are safe out there and prevent liability for, obviously, our residents and our taxpayers. As you look to the first item, the lot, single lot assessments, that tells you basically we're assessing the residents for their repairs. Some asked for additional costs. If you look down onto line item 22 locations, were asked for additional work at $10,709.79. And if you follow through the rest of them, basically followed suit as far as the budgeted numbers. But just wanted to let you know that we'll be coming, for the new council members coming to March for the addresses for 2020 program, so we can put them on the tax roll, so in case they sell their house, or people move, or something happens to them, that we can do the assessments in a later do the assessments in a later date. I will be bringing the 2019 summary to you guys on January 27th, so hopefully, again, trying to get everything in order for our auditors that are becoming to the finance department. Appreciate your help, and again, this is just a bit of information, housekeeping issue, so everyone's on page of what we spent in 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Zlinsik.
You're welcome.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Roroff.
As was explained, this is a project, the scope of which we've already approved. This is just time to pay for it. I'll offer approving for consent if there's no objection.
Mr. Donovan, did you have a question? Okay. All right, it's been offered on consent by Vice President Barr. Seeing no objections, we will place it on the consent agenda for January 15. And now we come to our last item of the evening, and this is a waiver petition that comes to us from the Planning Commission regarding petition 20-19-09-02-14 submitted by Arco Construction Company to construct and operate a senior assisted living facility located on the south side of 8 Mile Road between Farmington and Gill Roads. The address would be 33579 8 Mile Road in the northeast quarter of Section 4. Mr. Taramina?
Good evening, council. And again, this is a request to construct and operate a senior assisted living facility on a vacant parcel that is located just south of 8 Mile Road and west of Farmington Road, as you can see from the zoning map. It's an L-shaped parcel. It was originally or previously approved as the second phase of Northridge Commons Shopping Center. The shopping center is immediately to the west of this site. To the south is an area zoned R7 multifamily. It's part of On the Pond condominiums. There are other commercial properties to the north and to the east of the subject property. Nursing and convalescent centers are treated as a waiver use under section 1103N of the zoning ordinance. There's only one special requirement that applies to this type of use, and that is, must be at least one acre in size and have 500 square feet of land per bed. Again, this is a three-and-a-half acre site. It's a proposed 58-bed facility, so it is well within the density allowance of the, of that provision of the zoning ordinance. The building would be one-story in height. It's about 40,000 square feet in total size. This is the site plan showing you the location of the building in relationship to the parcel boundaries, as well as the other site improvements. This building would be set back about 340 feet from 8 Mile Road, about 88 feet from the south boundary. Both of these are well within the setback allowance of the zoning ordinance. There would be no direct access from this site to 8 Mile Road. It would rely on access from the shopping center where there is a cross-access and parking agreement in place. Complex, again, would have 58 total beds. This would be 54 units divided into 40 assisted living units, as well as 14 memory care units. Parking is based on one space for every three beds plus one per employee. This would require a total of 54 parking spaces altogether. The site plan shows 46 spaces, including 34 that would be striped initially as part of the first phase of construction. 12 additional spaces could be added later, but what's important to realize again here is the cross-parking and, and access agreement with the shopping center to the west. There's ample parking available next door, and we do not foresee any parking issues with this property. Terms of the building itself, this is an item that the Planning Commission reviewed over the course of several meetings. It would be a combination of brick, fiber cement siding, and cultured stone. Petitioner went back to the drawing board a couple of times to add additional masonry products to the facility. As you can see, too, it would have a gabled roof. It would be asphalt shingled. Back to the site plan, all the service area would be located to the rear of the complex, so this is the area bordering the commercial to the east. There would be a service drive as well as some ground-mounted mechanical equipment. The trash enclosure area, all of those areas would be effectively screened with a six-foot or seven-foot high masonry wall. There's an existing masonry wall that is located along the south boundary line that separates this property from the residential to the south. Stormwater management would be handled within an existing basin along the east side of the property. That basin would have to be reshaped a little bit in order to accommodate the proposed use. And then, lastly, is with respect to signage, that's something that was not reviewed as part of this petition. That would have to come back for additional review by either the Inspection Department or Planning Commission, depending on the extent of signage. Planning Commission is recommending approval of the plans as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taramina. Mr. Donovan.
To the chair. I have a question. So the parking, is it, the entrance, is it off of 8 Mile through the parking lot, then? The, the shopping center next door, is it off of Farmington?
It is off of 8 Mile. And if you look at this aerial photograph, you'll see the, what would be the main easterly drive to the shopping center that runs along the western boundary of this property. That aisleway, if you will, would effectively provide access to this site.
Is that a tight area for emergency vehicles to travel through?
Not at all. No, no. And our fire marshal has reviewed the plans. They provided input into the design.
Councilwoman Toig?
Thank you. If I may, to Mr. Taramina. Mr. Taramina, is this the same petitioner that had the 8 Mile Middlebelt proposal on a nursing center? Recall that?
No.
No?
No. Well, if I recall the project that you're referring to.
Yeah, it's not the same.
No, that is not. This ClearPath is a new, new entry into the Livonia market. However, they have significant experience in this area. I believe they have at least nine facilities across country.
About 15.
15.
Including Michigan?
Including Michigan. West Bloomfield and Grand Rapids.
Thank you. Thank you.
Would, would we like to go to the petitioner?
Yeah, sure.
Any more questions for Mr. Taramina?
Just a quick question. On the south side, where it abuts up to residential, I was noting a photometric plan. Do you guys, have you considered any light screens on those streetlights, just to try to any, reduce any light pollution that would hit the residential behind?
Good question, and I will check with the approving resolution that was presented to you by the Planning Commission, but typically, we have a condition that requires those shields be installed to prevent that light from trespassing across the property.
It's there.
We do have.
Yeah. Item, item number nine in the, in the Planning Commission submission.
Okay.
All right. If there are no more questions for Mr. Taramina, we'll go to the petitioner. Good evening, sir.
Well, my name is Jim Eisenhardt. I'm, as Mark said, I'm with ClearPath. We're the development company. We're also the owner of the facility. The brand would be Provision Living. Mark, I'm glad you gave that introduction. I wasn't sure I was going to have to give all of, all of that detail, but we're planning on 52 apartments, although it'll be 52, 58 beds. It'll be a 38,000-square-foot, single-story, all private pay. We typically have a lot of amenities such as theater rooms, bistros, cafes. There's also a rehab space that we have, but other than that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any other questions that you would have. It's assisted living and memory care, private pay.
Oh, okay. Good.
Councilman Donovan.
Is this a long-term facility, then? Or how, how long does a traditional patient stay there for?
Our average, our average stays about three years, but they're monthly leases that, that they go into, but they typically stay for three years. They either move on to go to a nursing home, or they, or they, this, this is their, they pass away in our facility.
Anyone else have any questions for the petitioner?
Madam President?
Yes.
No questions. I, I think the site plan looks good. It's a, it's a very nice-looking building, something that is desired here in Livonia, and something that's probably necessary in Livonia as well. I'm happy to offer an approving resolution. If there are no objections, that'll be for consent.
Madam President?
Yes.
I don't, I don't think I have any objections, but I prefer it stand regular. I'd like to look into a couple of things. I don't anticipate any objections, just not to make you nervous. Let's leave it at that.
Okay. Are you able to come back, Mr. Eisenhardt, to our meeting on the 15th?
If, if I don't, another member of my team.
Okay.
Madam President, can I ask, where are you coming from? Are you local?
I'm coming from St. Louis, Missouri.
Madam President?
Michigan?
Go ahead and put on consent. I don't have an objection. If, if that changes in the next two to three days, I'll let you know, and we can let them know.
Okay.